It seems around here, everything's an adventure, filled with excitement, challenges, and achievements. Farmers. It seems around here, every town is a sports town, and why not? Sports were important to us growing up, and we want the same for our kids: to get involved, to compete, because that's how kids learn to lead. And why Farmers Union Insurance supports these programs. They know sports aren't just about building skill and strength, but about building character. Farmers Union Insurance, they don't just protect our community, they invest in it.
One size fits all? That may be good enough for the other guy, but it's not good enough for you. With LG Seeds, we'll work together to face whatever obstacles. Weather, insects, field conditions, it's always changing, but we make sure your next step's the right one, and that's something that never changes. When the stakes are this high, it comes back to preparation. Plan your moves and count on results. LG Seeds, we mean business.
Life's an adventure, filled with excitement, challenges, and achievements. Farmers Union Insurance can provide you the safety net to keep you moving toward your goals and enjoying life's rewards. With multiple locations across the state, Farmers Union Insurance agents provide quick quotes and professional services you deserve. Since 1948, Farmers Union Insurance has focused on ensuring the people of South Dakota, from the most remote quarter section to the busiest intersection. Farmers Union Insurance, ensuring a brighter tomorrow. The South Dakota Army National Guard helps you get an education and prepares you for life. Joining the South Dakota Army National Guard gives you more than just pride that comes from serving your country. You can earn benefits that help pay for your education and expenses, and you can complete your education while you serve. The South Dakota Army National Guard offers many programs for every type of student, whether you're still in high school, attending college, or working toward a vocational certification. For more information, visit our Facebook and Instagram pages, or at nationalguard.com/st. If you're in need of an electrician, you can count on Patriot Electric for all your electrical needs. We have a dedicated team of professionals that provide quality service and installations on every project. We have more than 100 years of combined experience and knowledge in all aspects of the electrical trade, for your trenching, bucket truck, generator, lighting, residential, commercial, industrial, and farm projects. You can count on us to get the job done. Call Patriot Electric at 605-997-3536, or stop by and see us at 209 East Second Avenue.
One size fits all? That may be good enough for the other guy, but not for you. With LG Seeds, you can make the most of your fields with our experts and technology. The stakes are high, and preparation matters. Plan your moves, count on results. LG Seeds, we mean business.
We hope you are all enjoying the student productions of your school. Tonight's event and every event produced by your school during the school year are created, filmed, and produced by the students you love to follow and support. Become a booster of your school's live event coverage by becoming a sponsor. It's a great way to show your support of the athletes and students in your community. As a sponsor, you'll get great visibility for your business, organization, or family by supporting the live productions of your school.
Life's an adventure, filled with excitement, challenges, and achievements. Farmers Union Insurance can provide you the safety net to keep you moving toward your goals and enjoying life's rewards. With multiple locations across the state, Farmers Union Insurance agents provide quick quotes and professional services you deserve. Since 1948, Farmers Union Insurance has focused on ensuring the people of South Dakota, from the most remote quarter section to the busiest intersection. Farmers Union Insurance, ensuring a brighter tomorrow. The South Dakota Army National Guard helps you get an education and prepares you for life. Joining the South Dakota Army National Guard gives you more than just pride that comes from serving your country. You can earn benefits that help pay for your education and expenses, and you can complete your education while you serve. The South Dakota Army National Guard offers many programs for every type of student, whether you're still in high school, attending college, or working toward a vocational certification. For more information, visit our Facebook and Instagram pages, or at nationalguard.com/st. If you're in need of an electrician, you can count on Patriot Electric for all your electrical needs. We have a dedicated team of professionals that provide quality service and installations on every project. We have more than 100 years of combined experience and knowledge in all aspects of the electrical trade, for your trenching, bucket truck, generator, lighting, residential, commercial, industrial, and farm projects. You can count on us to get the job done. Call Patriot Electric at 605-997-3536, or stop by and see us at 209 East Second Avenue.
One size fits all? That may be good enough for the other guy, but not for you. With LG Seeds, you can make the most of your fields with our experts and technology. The stakes are high, and preparation matters. Plan your moves, count on results. LG Seeds, we mean business.
We hope you are all enjoying the student productions of your school. Tonight's event and every event produced by your school during the school year are created, filmed, and produced by the students you love to follow and support. Become a booster of your school's live event coverage by becoming a sponsor. It's a great way to show your support of the athletes and students in your community. As a sponsor, you'll get great visibility for your business, organization, or family by supporting the live productions of your school.
Life's an adventure, filled with excitement, challenges, and achievements. Farmers Union Insurance can provide you the safety net to keep you moving toward your goals and enjoying life's rewards. With multiple locations across the state, Farmers Union Insurance agents provide quick quotes and professional services you deserve. Since 1948, Farmers Union Insurance has focused on ensuring the people of South Dakota, from the most remote quarter section to the busiest intersection. Farmers Union Insurance, ensuring a brighter tomorrow. The South Dakota Army-
It's six o'clock in the morning. May I call the order? Mary, could you please lead us in bludgeon legends?
Our bludgeon legends do apply to the United States of America. In order to recover from this state, we're a nation member God, we're a legal liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Kevin, or I can buy. Open form. Members of the public who desire to address the board on items of interest or concern that do not appear on the agenda are invited to so at this time. Up to 15 minutes will be devoted to this agenda item with the board present to increase or decrease. The time is needed. It would be most appreciated if you would limit your remarks to not more than three minutes to appoint a spokesperson of the concern as per concern to support verbal presentation with written reports, if necessary or desired. We ask that you remember that the South Dakota law prohibits the board from discussing specific employees, their job performance, or students. If you have thoughts to share about items that are included as topics of tonight's meeting, we will invite those comments when we reach that point in the meeting. Please state your name before you begin speaking.
Can you hear me with the mask on? Okay, my name is Gail Keating, and I'm a first grade teacher. Dear School Board, Administrators, and guests, I've taught here at Flanrew Elementary for 36 years. I had preschool for three years before that time. I know one of your goals is to keep teachers here as retaining educators has been an issue at Flanrew. And we have very gifted teachers here. But I want you to know that after all these years of teaching, I have never felt so overwhelmed with work. I can't even keep up after many extra hours put in outside of school hours. Teachers need to put in extra time after school, and I always have. But this year is at the breaking point for many of us. The virtual learners added to our load have made our job very frustrating. It would be so helpful to be monetarily compensated for our extra work, or to hire someone to specifically take care of the virtual learners. Another thing you could do is give us a longer Christmas break for some relaxation. You need to implement one of these options so our educators return next year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing no other concerns, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So?
Motion by Brian, second by Kevin, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, the same side. And for the communications recognition of visitors, thank you for coming. Administrative report.
Just a couple things for me here. The good news is, we haven't had a fall break after Thanksgiving break, so that's good to know. Also, the school board received this plaque dealing with, and I'll just read the first sentence here, our first paragraph. Congratulations to your district school board for earning an all aboard for the 1920 school year. Associated School Board Board Recognition Program is designed to recognize school boards for the dedicated service to students in South Dakota. Recognize the time, effort, commitment put forth by the board members, not only in regular meetings, but also through activities and training opportunities offered by associated school boards, and demonstrate your leadership through local, state, and national meetings, committees, and assemblies. Congratulations to the board on that. That's about all I have for now. Or both the principals have anything? By the way, we'll be taking a board picture after the meeting tonight with the plaque.
All right, elementary side, a couple things. We had, the student council just got done collecting hygiene items for the Moody County Interlace Community Action Facility. They collected over 250 different items, so just want to say a thank you. A thank you to everybody that helped donate, families and students. It's well needed, and I know they're appreciative for that, so thank you. And then, Mr. G, if you see our tally in the back of the wall there, he started a walk club at the beginning of the year for our elementary students to promote lifelong physical activity. And so the students, every Friday, would, for PE, they would go and either walk laps on the track or laps in the gym, and then you would tally them up and calculate it into miles. And so, they hit their goal of 1,000 miles last week, so it didn't take them as long as what he was planning. He's on a go-lot, um, the kids really enjoyed it on those Fridays. They made it a challenge amongst themselves to see how many miles they could get in. And it's a very surprising to see how many of those kids can run and run at such young ages. They put in a lot of miles. So, as a reward, they get to have a, the last week of school, Mr. G has like a movie weekend planned out for them all, so. And then, the last thing is, Mrs. Kilton Hunter, she's been doing our weekend fuel for the past couple of years, and she's doing it again, and she's got a lot of donations, so we just want to say a thank you to a few of them. So Sam Peggert, Messiah Lutheran Church, Dennis Wees, and there's others as well. But again, just thank you for everybody that has donated to that, for our kids and our families. And then also, to go along with that, Mrs. Adolf and High School National Honor Society, they do the packing for it, so they come down once a week and put a lot of time into getting that ready. And this year, especially Mrs. Adolf, she's put in a lot of work to get that up to the high school, not even come down as much, so thank you to them. All I got. Pleasure.
Mr. Ralph gave me some things to share from middle school, and I forgot to write them down. There's good stuff happening in middle school too. I'm sorry, I forgot to write it down. Thank you back at the NHS. If you have seen some flamingos in your yard, and somebody in this room, I'm pretty sure paid to have them in my yard too. Thank you, Mr. Webber. They are unleashing flax of flamingos to raise the money, so it's been kind of a sending word to decorate with them. We had 24 students take the PSAT, National Parents' Qualification Qualifying Test in October. 21 of the 24 students scored 50% title for blood, so that was pretty awesome. Our student council and our PBIS have joined courses, and they've created some fun activities for our students to do in the final push of the semester. Mr. Cleveland and teachers have done an awesome job reinforcing accountability for the assignments then. Each week for the past three weeks, we have challenged students to clear out a number of missing assignments by Friday afternoon. We recognize students who rose to the challenge by having their crazy pop blitz last week, for those who met the goal. We had a special, extra, 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 extra large crazy pop for the students who had zero missing assignments, and we had a work ethic goes, and that was pretty awesome. We started the week without that. So by Friday, we had a work ethic students without missing assignments. That was pretty awesome. Our teachers have said they want to continue this next semester because they've had so many students checking in with them that they've been trying to get, to come to their rooms, to make up tests and assignments, and certainly blitzes, and now it's our, into their classrooms, so it's awesome. We're going to follow the Wednesday bell schedule for our semester test, which are scheduled for Tuesday and Wednesday of next week. So Tuesday is at 3 o'clock out, we'll just follow our bell schedule for that day. And then Wednesday, we cut the day off at 1:30, so the kids are only missing home. So we'll follow the bell schedule for Monday, Tuesday, and Sunday. Just want to put a reminder out there that students who miss semester tests have to arrange to take them during a break, or they will need to take them on a day that comes back.
Thank you. I'm inviting the students to talk about the program.
So we just wanted to update the board as well as the community about some of the new student health programs we have coming to our school, starting in the spring of 2021, so super soon here. We're very thankful for the Flanrew community and support they show for our student mental health. So one of the programs has already been brought to the board's attention by Mr. Logg, and that is Teen Mental Health First Aid. So for that, Sherry Nelson, the Director of Suicide Prevention from the Healthline Center, reached out and asked us to partner with her. She will be coming to the school to train our 10th grade students in Teen Mental Health First Aid this fall. In addition, she trained six of our high school staff in Teen Mental Health First Aid, and that is funded through a grant that she got, so I'm pretty excited about that. And then I'm going to bring Chelsea up to share about another program.
So I was going to share a little bit about our Hope Squad that we have initiated, or will initiate next semester. So the advisors present for tonight's meeting are Carrie, myself, Kaylee Bollers, and Stephanie Wondell. And then we have two more advisors who are on end Monday, who will be here tonight. That's Lexine Poswell, she's going to be our school counseling intern next semester. And then Kristen Weston is also going to be an advisor. So the Hope Squad program is an educational, school-based, peer-to-peer curriculum. Their goal is to prevent suicide through public awareness and education, reduce stigma, and serve as a resource to those touched by suicide. An established Hope Squad within a school uses curriculum, training, and peer interventions to help educate the students how to talk about mental health and suicide prevention. Hope Squad members are nominated by their peers, chosen by the administration, and trained on how to help peers who are struggling. Each Hope Squad contains about eight to 10 students per grade. Through the lessons, the advisors will teach the Hope Squad members how to be more aware of the warning signs, teaching them how to listen without judgment, show empathy towards other students, and help prevent stigmas in regards to asking for help. This program also teaches the Hope Squad members how to take care of themselves while they're assisting with the students around them. The program encourages the school to work with our community connections, and we're to work together for suicide prevention and to better support our students in and out of school. So this was initiated by Nikki Herzog, and Carrie and I applied for a grant for the program, and out of three, out of a whole nation, we received one of them, and we are the founding school in South Dakota. So there are over 950 different schools in the United States and Canada, and with the first year of implementation, the program costs recovered, but with the attached table, we are hoping to work with our community to help ease the cost of this program on our school and encourage strong connections between us. And I did include some possible connections that we can make and reach out to and see if they would donate and give to the cost. So Carrie and I thought we'd like to start spring of next semester, working with grades four, seven, eight, nine, and 11. They nominate their own Hope Squad leaders, and in order for students to be on our Hope Squad, we have to, we have to have parent permission, and we're going to have a parent information night, and we will meet with the parents virtually to share this information and answer their questions. So we just attached our agreement on there, so you guys can see, they have some added things like adding resources on our school website, and then offering parent names, so virtually.
Hey, you agree with what you said, it sounds like a good program.
I am quite certain. We see that in our board chat, and I think the way we scanned in, there was a part in the document that says click here for more information, and we couldn't, when we clicked, we couldn't retrieve any of the information. So is there somewhere we can come up with that?
Can you imagine just send you the link to the Hope Squad website? That would be great. Okay, thank you.
I have one question. I was going to ask, what is the, 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 like, the student, or the, what are the expectations of students with it? Just kind of know.
So right now, what we're thinking is, when the Hope Squad member determines that we'll need to send at least twice a month, and so obviously we'll take them during, not during the fourth time, so the special times before the end of the day, we're leaving a bunch of time. The program is based in time, so they're all going safe.
But what is your role, like, in, in Hope Squad?
So there's three different curriculums. There's an elementary school curriculum that'll go for fourth grade, there's a junior high one that'll go for seventh and eighth grade, and then there's a high school one for high school. So it's age appropriate, not all of the levels. For instance, the junior Hope Squad's for fourth graders, it's going to be more that like kindness and whole intervention. And the junior high and high school, it's going to be noticing the signs of suicide, how to have those mental health conversations with people, as well as how to identify, again, is this a conversation I can handle, but is this something that can be to get adults involved, which anytime that suicide is mentioned or experienced, there's always ways to be involved, so teaching them not to be too difficult, trying to get help. It also teaches students how to take care of themselves through stressful situations, and how to create boundaries, like maybe how a friend could keep sharing things with you, that's how they're, that's like stressing you out too much, like you can set boundaries. So the students selected peers that they're already going to with their issues or that they already trust, so we're hoping this will let the resiliency factor of our students who are already getting some of this concerned information.
Usually that would be eight to 10 kids per grade, and then breaks?
About, yeah, thirteen, fourteen, right? We're very excited, so it's been fun going into the classroom and talking to them about it. They're kind of geared as like a mental health club, and just another way to help their fellow students and get involved at the school.
When I looked at some of the labor work on it, there's a pre and a post test. What is that?
It's asking them questions about mental health and about suicide prevention, so they do the pre-test before they get any of the training, and they do the post-test at the end.
She will be coming to the school to train our tenth grade students in teen mental health first aid this fall. In addition, she trained six of our high school staff in teen mental health first aid and that is funded through a grant that she got. So I'm pretty excited about that. And then I'm going to bring Chelsea up to share about another program.
So I was going to share a little bit about our Hope Squad that we have initiated or will initiate next semester. So the advisors present for tonight's meeting are Carrie, myself, Kaylee Bollers, and Stephanie Wondell. And then we have two more advisors who were born in Monday, who can be here tonight. That's Lexi Poswell, she's going to be our school counseling intern next semester. And then Kristen Weston is also an advisor. So the Hope Squad program is an educational school-based peer-to-peer curriculum. Their goal is to prevent suicide through public awareness and education, reduce stigma, and serve as a resource to those touched by suicide. An established Hope Squad within a school uses curriculum, training, and peer interventions to help educate the students how to talk about mental health and suicide prevention. Hope Squad members were nominated by their peers, chosen by administration, and trained on how to help peers who are struggling. Each Hope Squad contains about eight to ten students per grade. Through the lessons, the advisors will teach the Hope Squad members how to be more aware of the warning signs, teaching them how to listen without judgment, showing empathy towards other students, and help reduce stigmas in regards to asking for help. This program also teaches the Hope Squad members how to take care of themselves while they're assisting with the students around them. The program encourages the school to work with our community connections and work together for suicide prevention and to better support our students in and out of school. So this was initiated by Nikki Herzog and Carrie and I applied for a grant for the program and out of three, out of a whole nation, we received one of them and we are the founding school in South Dakota. So there are over nine hundred and fifty different schools in the United States and Canada and with the first year of implementation, the program costs recovered, but with the attached table, we are hoping to work with our community to help ease the cost of this program on our school and encourage strong connections between us. And that did include some possible connections that we can make and reach out to and see if they would donate and give to the cost. So Carrie and I thought we would like to start spring of next semester, working with grades four, seven, eight, nine, and eleven. They nominate their own Hope Squad leaders and in order for students to be on our Hope Squad, we have to, we have to have parent permission and we're going to have a parent information night and we will meet with the parents virtually to share this information and answer their questions. So we just attached our agreement on there so you guys can see they have some added things like adding resources on our school website and then offering parent names. So virtually.
Thank you very much. That sounds like a good program.
We see that in our board chat and I think the way it was scanned in, there was a part in that document that says click here for more information and we couldn't, when we clicked, we couldn't retrieve any of the information. So is there somewhere we can come up with that? If you want us to just send you the link to the Hope Squad website, that would be great. Okay, thank you.
I have one question. I was going to ask, what is the, 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 the student part of the procedure? What are the expectations for students with this type of call?
So right now, what we're thinking is when the Hope Squad member are determined that we'll be with them at least twice a month. And so obviously we'll take them during, not during, before the time. So the stuff is timed before the end of the day, we're leaving a bunch of them. The program is based in time, so they're all going safe.
But what is their role, like in, in Hope Squad?
So there's three different curriculums. There's an elementary school curriculum that'll go for fourth grade. There's a junior high one that'll go seventh and eighth grade. And then there's a high school one for high school. So it's age appropriate, not all of the levels. For instance, the junior Hope Squad for fourth graders, it's going to be more that like kindness and whole week prevention. And the junior high and high school, it's going to be noticing the signs of suicide, how to have those mental health conversations with people, as well as how to identify when is this a conversation I can handle, but is this something that could be to get adults involved, which anytime that suicide is mentioned or experienced, there's always to be involved. So teaching them not to be too difficult, trying to get help. It also teaches students how to take care of themselves through stressful situations and how to create boundaries, like maybe how a friend could keep sharing things with you, that's how they're, that's like stressing you out too much, like you can set boundaries. So the students selected peers that they're already going to with their issues or that they already trust. So we're hoping this will let the resiliency factor of our students who are already getting some of this concern information.
Usually that would be eight to ten kids per grade and then grades?
About, yeah, thirteen or fourteen. We're very excited. So it's been fun going into the classroom and talking to them about it. They're kind of geared as like a mental health club and just another way to help their fellow students and get involved at the school.
When I looked at some of the labor work on it, there's a pre and a post test. What is that?
It's asking them questions about mental health and about suicide prevention. So they do the pre-test before they get any of the training and they do the post-test at the end. And the first lesson that we do is QPR, so question, persuade, refer, which is a suicide prevention training that all of our staff got last year. That's just for the middle school and high school. I wouldn't do that with them. And we're hoping, so this year, we're starting off a little bit smaller. Chelsea goes to fourth grade and then we'll have a middle school seventh, eighth, high school ninth, and eleventh since tenth, where I give a teen mental health first aid. And then our goal is next school year to have it for all the grades. And then fifth and sixth are included in that elementary curriculum.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. I would see disclosure and concept of interest.
Just to go over that again, what that is, in case you don't know, this is a conflict of interest between the administration and any school board member for the school. For example, if my wife was a plumber in town and we were giving her a lot of work, over five thousand dollars worth of plumbing, then we would have to put something to, to the board that says this could be a conflict of interest because I am getting hurt coming in to check our plumbing and fixing all that. And then the board would have to decide if that's a real conflict of interest or if it's just because this is the way it is in finance over here, we don't have any plumbers out there. So that goes with anybody on the board or anybody that is an administrator here. So you see this on agenda every month and it's a state law that it has to be on there every month, just like the open forum part has to be on every board meeting that we have. So with all that said, I'm at this time.
Thank you. I would need staff mental health survey.
If you need school board members, you guys are welcome. And thank you for allowing us to share some data and ideas with you this evening. The mental health team, FDA, and advisory committee has put together a little presentation for you guys regarding for staff morale and mental health, as well as some ideas that the staff came up with to help combat that stress during the year COVID. As you guys know, the COVID nineteen crisis has disrupted the lives of everyone, with certain professions being the hardest. Without a doubt, healthcare workers, small business owners, and the education system are within that category. At the beginning of the pandemic, teachers pre-wrote every single lesson plan. They had to learn new software and they literally restructured an entire education system with what seemed like a kinga. And they did all of this with one hundred and ten percent effort because they love our kids and they love teaching. Fast forward nine months later, and I'm not sure we even know how many more times they've had to relearn the virtual learning platform, software programs, or how many times they've had to rewrite those lesson plans again. While we were quick to call our teachers superheroes at the beginning of the pandemic, we'd like to remind everyone that even superheroes need breaks. The mental health team has noticed staff morale and mental health deteriorating. Time and time again, you know, we've heard in school talk about the well-being of our students, which is of most importance, but we want to remind the school board that we also need to prioritize our staff and the health as well. Following the last school board meeting, there was a lot of discussion and feelings of lack of concern for the staff. So we, along with FDA and advisory committee, got together to create a staff morale survey to gauge our staff's mental health and to also give staff an opportunity to brainstorm some ideas on how they can feel more supported during these unprecedented times. Please note that when we talk about worker and staff morale, we want you to understand that we're still dedicated to our profession, to our students, and to our community.
So Chelsea and I will go through the data portion of the survey. Our survey was open from Monday, November thirtieth to Friday, December fourth of 2020. The email invitation was sent out to a hundred and twelve FPS staff and there were a total of ninety-two responses. This is a response rate of eighty-two percent and that should be considered an accurate representation of FPS staff views and concerns. So our first question asked, do you find yourself working more hours, fewer hours, or about the same as you did last school year prior to COVID nineteen? Fifty-five staff members responded that they are working more hours than they did last school year prior to the pandemic. Taking out the ten staff members that responded that it was not applicable or they did not work for FPS last school year, sixty-seven percent of the returning staff respondents are working more hours this school. We'll ask the next question. When asked to what extent workplace-related COVID nineteen stress is affecting their lives outside of work, a majority of staff selected four or five leaning towards a significant effect. This was a total of sixty-two FPS staff expressing strong concern about the extent work-related COVID nineteen stress is affecting their personal lives. As a school, we strive to take care of our students' mental health, but we believe that it is important to also recognize the mental health and well-being of our staff. We are concerned that when asked about their mental health and well-being, the majority of our staff skewed towards the core end of the spectrum. Fifty-four staff members rated themselves as a one or two on a scale of one, four, to five excellent. We also polled our staff on their access to mental health services and eighty-five point eight percent reported that they do have access. Of the thirteen staff members who reported not having access to mental health services, four stated that they do need services. As a mental health team, we will be posting information about mental health resources in the staff lounges as well as sending out an email with resources. The response of morale towards working at FPS this school year is concerning. Staff were asked to rate both their personal morale and their perception of FPS, FPS staff morale as a whole, on a scale of one, four, to five excellent. Both resulted in a majority selection of one and two. In regards to their own morale, only twenty-one staff selected a four or five, showing they are above a new topia. When reflecting on their perception of staff morale as a whole, this dropped to only nine staff selecting four or five.
The next paragraph from our survey asks who the staff feel most supported by this school year. I want to clarify that the map does not add up in this graph because the staff were allowed to choose all that apply, as well as put in more comments in their answers. Overwhelmingly, the staff feel most supported by their coworkers, eighty staff responded. Thirty-five staff members who responded feel supported by the administration, as well as eighty people who felt supported by the school board. There were twenty-four other staff members who responded with additional comments on whom they most feel supported by. This includes family, teaching teams, students, spouse, high school principal, public and students, friends, some coworkers, and the board of family. There were some comments that were cut off on this paragraph and those are as follows. I feel supported by Nikki and my coworkers, no one else. Co-workers, I feel supported by my immediate coworkers, however, not by other FPS staff members. We are isolated to be with our coworkers and outside people can't come in, so it's hard to feel supported when we do not be together, be together, and the school board cannot make their presence known due to restrictions on visitors in the school. Some community members and families, specifically principals, as has administration. We are isolated to be with our coworkers and outside people can't come in. Co-workers include caregivers, janitors, and senators. The next paragraph asks about if staff think COVID-related concerns or needs were reflected in the FPS decisions. Most of our staff responded so that they feel like their concerns are not reflected in the decisions made by the board. Fifty-six responded with a not at all or very little. There were thirty-six staff who feel the board sometimes or significantly considers their concerns in their decisions. Well, then next paragraph asks staff if they foresee themselves working here at Plander Public Schools one year from now. The majority, forty, staff responded that they have not made a decision yet. Thirty-four responded that they might come back to school next year. Eleven responded that they hope to be working somewhere else next year. The remaining staff chose to explain their choice in more detail. The school board makes me question at times, I don't feel valued or supported by the school board, I will most likely be bad. No, I plan to not sign my contract this spring. I have decided not, I have not decided, but I have asked myself often if this is where I want to be next year. If we have means as a family, I would most likely not be returning for another school year. If we have means as a family, I do not believe I would be. I would like to, but COVID has made things pretty stressful in education, I would consider leaving teaching altogether. The next question, if staff answered no to the previous question, do you foresee yourself working in the future? They want to answer this question. To what extent is your decision based on the decisions regarding COVID nineteen? The vast majority, forty-four, responded that they feel it was significant to moderately affecting their decision to come back next year. Seventeen responded that it would not at all or affect it.
Hello, I'm Maryanna Gessman. I'm the Education Association president and a teacher here in Plandrew. You'll be hearing from the staff later on how COVID nineteen conditions have affected all of us this school year. We are not alone when it comes to these concerns. However, as our employer, you need to be aware of the ongoing stressors that are now affecting us physically and mentally. Many things are happening in our school that has helped make it a safe and effective place for learning. My portion of the survey addresses the positive points referenced on our survey in regards to the staff, administration, and school board. I'll read some of these points from the survey at this time, in addition to what you also have in your packet. Some of the building and COVID preventions that have been a positive are the air filtering system, safety procedures to include baths, shields, extra cleaning precautions to include the fogging of the high-traffic areas, the back-to-school plan to address the different phases and the different venues of learning. Also enforcing the safety procedures and staying consistent when knowing that when nonissues arise. Some of the positives on this admin part of the survey is seeking out different ways to boost morale. This includes food and fun that bring joy, smile, and positive conversations. Understanding that we are all going through this together, they care, they care about us personally, but also understand taking care of us helps ensure that students are also taken care of. Admin acknowledged the extra workload on all staff and seek ways to solve the issue by actively listening to us and allowing us to give solution-based ideas. It is nice to hear a thank you and positive words of appreciation. Admin will do check-ins to see how staff are doing. Communication during staff meetings and through emails have been positive. They're supportive even when they are overwhelmed. They are also going through this with us and we also appreciate the flexibility with their PD time on the space. Some of the staff positives include supporting one another and helping each other, picking up extra duties to support one another, giving advice, support, ideas, and acknowledging the feelings. Co-workers tend to be solution-based and we also appreciate all the para-support that has been so beneficial to us during this time. The tech department has been a big part of all of this, especially with all the different learning venues and getting staff and students ready. Also the positive, to end the positive on the school board, is pushing back our start date, providing us with more in-service days, giving us time to transition to e-learning, the support of the safety measures and importance of quarantine times, allowing input or seeking out input on back-to-school plans and the different learning formats, and also the hiring of more staff to include the parent physicians and our janitor physicians. Staying on top of the COVID nineteen guidelines, giving us in-service time also allows us time to prepare for the many different learning venues happening, the COVID nineteen-related issues, and the transition times when changes occur. So those are the positives and now we'll have, we'll hear from other staff members on some of the other impacts from this survey.
Hi, my name's Heather Beltman. I teach fourth grade here at Plandrew. I'm going to be talking to you about how the FPS administration can better show appreciation and support for the staff. We are very grateful for the support the administration has shown. Gestures such as a potato bar, rougher clothes, dress down days, the all-in-grade decoration built here, as well as the frequent check-ins. However, after reviewing those survey results, there are some common concerns among staff. One area of concern was providing staff more time to complete the additional work and having less duties. We have been given lots of additional work this year, but instead of adding work time to complete these tasks, we've got our work time taken away with the addition of all these extra duties. Easily distributing these duties to all staff would help alleviate some of this workload. It would limit the amount of busy work given to staff and only focus on necessary tasks. According to the survey, one of the biggest stressors for teachers this year is managing virtual learning along with the regular classrooms. Staff desperately need help in this department. Providing time to manage virtual learners or removing that job from teachers will alleviate a lot of stress. Timely and clear communication was an overall concern. Parents should not be learning about recording school announcements before teachers. An example of that was way of remote learning. We also need to be informed of meetings, tasks, et cetera, in a timely manner so we can better manage our time. If there is a concern with an individual staff member, please address them directly rather than addressing the entire staff. This makes everyone second guess their choices and the individual who needs to be addressed may not clearly get the message. Trust was another concern many of the staff members were vocal about. Working from home during remote learning, what seems to be the best choice in order to continue to keep the staff safe, we are very capable of doing our jobs safely from home. We created a back-to-school plan with a group of professionals for this reason. Again, if this becomes an issue, then that individual needs to be addressed. Lastly, many staff members are concerned about the inaccurate representations of the individual's schools at school board meetings. Many times, the administration only reports the positives from each school. While these are important, we also need to report the major concerns and issues. We have been told to come to school board meetings, however, many of us feel we should go through our chain of command first in order to follow protocol. In conclusion, we do feel that our administrators care, but like the teachers are under huge and modest stress. We appreciate what they do for their staff, but we would like to see those concerns resolved with positive actions so we can make the rest of the year successful. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Abby Hox, third grade teacher here at Plandrew. I'm going to share how members of the school board can better show appreciation and support for the staff. Through this survey that was conducted, the following ideas of how the board can help support staff were decorated. A large number of staff members are very much in support of a COVID relief stipend that has been given out at other schools. This would show appreciation for the extra hours worked past our contracted times. At the last school board, school board meeting, the calendar was discussed regarding Christmas break. A large number of staff members would appreciate extra days added to the end of Christmas break as a buffer for potential symptoms to arise due to family gatherings. The staff would also appreciate the half-day of December twenty-third to be used as a staff birthday to finalize grades for in-person and virtual students. Many staff members also noted the importance of additional time for edgenuity and online preparations. Some school districts have gone to a four-day in-person week with Fridays being dedicated to virtual students, while other districts have hired teachers solely for the purpose of virtual workers. Thank you.
Hi, Elizabeth White, I see that I see you here. The last section on our survey was just any other comments we would, that staff wanted to share with the school board. There were quite a few comments related to feeling as if staff are not only asked to teach students, but we're also trying to raise them in an unprecedented world right now. Plander Public Schools really needs help from not only our community, but also our school board at this point in time. We need to be concerned about the whole problem we're facing. We need to be concerned about the whole problem we're facing, not just the half of the equation that's the students. With staff putting in all these hours, we're stressed, we're compromising our own immune systems. When staff are at higher risk for detrimental issues arising from COVID-19. There's not enough time in the day to do our regular job and then adding on virtual learners to some teachers and staff members. There's just not enough time in the day, and it can't be done efficiently in the manner we've been approaching. Staff don't feel like they've been heard at this point in time, they're really tired. Another comment that was brought up was that a back-to-school committee was created in order to create a plan to enter school and process issues within a COVID-19 role. And there was a current concern that those issues hadn't gone back to committee. They've just been made without a discussion from the teachers. So, that summarizes our presentation. What questions do you have for us?
I have a question, and it's just, I guess I have two questions. One of them is, you stated that you had ideas and they weren't taken back to committee. Can you elaborate on that? Because I'm not sure if you're talking about bringing it back to us or another committee.
The back-to-school committee that was created, that came up with the back-to-school plan, decisions that were made regarding that on the Fridays and the...
So, are, so when you talk about some of the focus, are you saying that potentially that the teachers would want the same committee that was on the back-to-school plan to come back and look at the plan and see where you're at, what has been done, and what changes need to be made? Is that what you're asking? I guess I just need more information.
Yeah, asking that decisions that get made when we change that back-to-school plan actually go back to that committee.
I have one other area highlighted after you were speaking, and this came out kind of as a theme from a moving topic. More time to complete the additional work, and it's the virtual learning piece of it. So, if somebody could help us understand that?
Are you wanting to know like what all entails of virtual learning?
Well, when you're talking about virtual learning, are you talking that you're videotaping your classes so that...
These are the edutainment kids. So, the kids who are not in class. Would you like me to go into detail on that?
Yeah.
So, our edutainment kids are our virtual kids, but then we also have our regular classroom kids. So, the edutainment, you have to obviously go on and assign to each member of your class for every subject that you teach. So, if you're an elementary teacher, that's quite a few subjects. And then you also have to be checking in with them, which is supposed to be at least a couple of times a week, but ends up being daily for most of us. Understandably, those parents are home with those kids, and that's difficult to do as a parent keeps working. But it's hard for them to understand that we are working all day with our regular classroom kids, and we cannot be just at a beck and call for an email or a phone call. And that's kind of what's happening. That program also has us reassign in case they fail, and many of those kids are not passing those assignments the first time. There is a portion on there where you can click to have it reassigned automatically, but that doesn't go for everything. It only goes for certain quizzes or certain assignments. So, we are still having to go back and continually contact those parents and say, hey, your child has passed this. And have to continually reassign until they have passed those things. That's an extreme amount of work because that's something you're doing almost daily. From my own personal experience, I have five virtual learners, and I can tell you only about two of those passed consistently. So, I'm basically spending all of my time on virtual learners when my time really should be with my kids that are in my classroom. Not that I want to discredit those kids that are virtual learners, but it is taking away from my time when the kids are there in my classroom.
So, two points on that. I agree with you, the virtual learners are just as important to be teaching and to, and we need to have that learning experience as students in class. Parents made that choice for a reason. But I just want to know, what do you think would be the solution for them? What is the recommendation or the suggestion? I know a lot of things came to the table, and there were a few things that were said that would alleviate some of the feelings or that would make you feel better, but for some of those others, stuff like the virtual learning, what would be a suggestion from your team?
So, we did put that in our results. I think we went over that a few times. We said that you could do a four-day week. That's what many other schools are doing. Say it's a four-day week with Fridays being virtual days. That's your time to help all those virtual learners. Or, a lot of schools have hired a teacher that is strictly a virtual learner teacher. That's what they do. So, we have gotten some options from other schools to see what they're doing to make it successful, because right now it's not successful.
Do you think hiring a virtual teacher would be better? Since you're saying you check in every day, if you just do virtual on Friday, would that be written?
Yes. That would be my race here moving forward, is that if you don't hire a student virtually, that most parents are still going to contact you. As far as our principals have tried to evenly distribute that, I mean, we have plenty of teachers that are in contact for edutainment as well. But ultimately, those parents are still going to contact with your virtual teacher.
So, with that question, Ms. Beltman, if we recorded class and the kids were learning the same instruction at home as they were in your classroom, would that alleviate some of it?
Depends on who's recording the class.
That you as a teacher are where in your classroom is where the kids in person are learning and same as the kids at home at the same time?
That would still be an extremely long work for your classroom teacher.
Okay.
I would think that if we did it, that way you wouldn't have to work around behaviors in class.
Yes.
It would take time.
Correct. That would be very difficult. That would be more difficult than what I'm going to have.
Okay, so I'm Johnny LeBrenne. I teach in the middle school, so it's a little bit different than middle school, but we have like three groups of students around. We have our in-person, then we have our kids that sometimes they have to go home for two weeks. Those are the kids that are going to be watching or recording on the class. Our virtual students, that's completely different. We are recreating their curriculum. So, when we're referring to the virtual, we're talking about the kids that we have actually either not seen at all in person this year or very seldom. So, that's where to all of a sudden expect those kids. So, our virtual kids, at least in the middle school, have never met our Microsoft Teams, which is our platform for the kids that are home for their two weeks. So, that's, so when you keep saying virtual, we're not talking about the kids that are in quarantine. We're talking about the kids that we have never met, or they started off in person and their parents have decided to do virtual for the rest of the semester or even a year in some cases.
So, when you talk, you need to do it again. So, it's a program that's, or the curriculum's developed, there's a teacher teaching, and then you are still the teacher.
We, so, I teach fifth and sixth grade, so edutainment is actually very different. Once you hit sixth grade, sixth grade on up, the whole program is completely different. So, fifth grade on down, we classroom teachers are creating that curriculum for the elementary kids. Sixth grade on up, so when we assigned our virtual sixth graders for English, Language Arts, and Reading, we were able to meet for, it was like an hour or two, and we created the entire semester. So, that is not the huge time commitment. But for fifth grade, we truly need weekly to create the next week's assignments. Because elementary edutainment, we as classroom teachers are completely recreating the curriculum. Because fifth grade on down edutainment is made as a supplement for your classroom. Sixth grade on up, it is created as like where like credit recovery, so it's not a supplement. It's a true curriculum mapped out. So, it's totally different.
I mean, I know that elementary school started off with the MOLIMAX, right? And then it was switched because it wasn't working like we were hoping, is that right or not?
Correct. So, then again, fifth grade didn't MOLIMAX, sixth grade did edutainment. So, I will say we thought for fifth grade, when we switched edutainment, this would save so much time. It actually almost worked. Because again, we're recreating everything. We're not, it's not something where it's mapped out for us. Because again, sixth grade, so we were ready for English, Language Arts, Reading. We already have second semester, but it was already figured out. Because if it maps it out, we can pick and choose and switch around the curriculum map that they were recreating. Fifth grade on down, we can create it on our own, because they're supplements. They're not actual whole lessons.
How much help do you think we need? Some of the elementary, maybe one, two hires?
Yeah, so, me personally, for middle school, I would like to dedicate like a day. I could definitely see where like fifth and sixth graders, who didn't have a virtual teacher, and then suddenly they're going to have their own virtual teacher because, again, this is a little different. Once you get that fifth grade has that. But yeah, I think at the middle school, although there definitely needs to be some sort of extra assistance for teachers.
Thanks for explaining that. So, Bill, the different options we talked about, like the extra day or the four-day week or the Wednesday afternoon time, so hiring, overall, in your guys' opinion, and I know everybody has a different opinion, is one option better than another? Like is having a day where you guys actually make contacts and that's what you do? Or hiring someone, I mean, we can, and we try to hire and then just can't hire, but there's nobody applying. So, kind of like try and find the best across the board that would make the most impact on you guys. And I'm sure everybody has a different opinion on what would be best for them, even like classes and grades, but... Something to think about is like overall, what would be the best option?
I think what we're all kind of whispering about is that, just like you, just like you stated, everyone kind of has their one idea of what would be the best solution. So, making those kind of all at a consensus where perhaps we need to use some of that. I don't know, I have a few people. Right, or, yeah, I think too, people say...
I'm Sam Lozey. I'm one of the special ed teachers in the elementary. I can say from the special ed side of things, it's been extremely challenging this year. And having, I guess, and this is my own opinion, not talking to any of my fellow elementary staff, a four-day week could be great from the special ed side. We are still servicing our virtual kids. So, I still see those kids who are doing edutainment, I still see them coming into the school for their IEP services. So, for instance, I have a kid that'll come in today for about forty-five minutes, or that was the kid I have. And because of our safety precautions, I'm trying not to see any of my other special ed kids at that time. So, that's once to the night for that time. So, if I had a day where I could schedule all of my virtual kids, I would have the rest of the week with all the other students I have in my IEPs. Not including now all the paperwork I have to do additionally, all the documentation I have to do additionally for those kids at home. Would be great to have like a day, just do that. And then see the rest of my special ed kids that I have to see all day for all their times that I legally have to, I can't, you know, do anything different. That would be, I guess, like, I can't much else. Go ahead.
So, I probably would ask that kind of changing a four-day week. However, I guess my main concern is we, what does that mean for our scheduling, classes? I mean, trying to find a balance between what works and what is not. Rebuilding schedules for the how many times this year, every day. I mean, there's always things to work around and figure out, but... We also need to take into consideration that's one more day than the child does not get a hot meal and is in a warm house this winter. So, when you talk about going to four days, because then you're, you're talking about not having kids go to school one day a week, is that correct? So, we need to think about that also with the kids at home. I'm not saying that you guys don't need an extra day. I'm just saying that we also need to remember that those kids are sometimes not in the best houses and taken care of as the temps get colder.
Hi, I'm Natasha Luftberg. I actually teach kindergarten. I just wanted to add, I guess my experience is a little bit different from Heather's. I have zero contact with most of my students, no matter what phone call or phone, email, anywhere I can find them. And they're also not getting their work done. So, last year, we made a big deal about we wanted to renew kindergarten because we didn't want kids retained. Well, unfortunately, I think that this year it's going to happen again because nobody's getting their work done. So, I personally think that if we hired one person, that that is their sole job. Instead of me trying to, between each class and bloody nose and all that, try and call parents and get them to do their work, it'd be way easier.
Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Seeing no other comments, move on to item five. The consent of Jeremy, a motion to approve the Bennett's financial statement set bills. Motion by Carrie?
All second.
Second by Jamie. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same side. Item six, old business back-to-school plan. Close contacts and quarantine procedures and suggested changes.
No suggested changes, just FYI in case you didn't know that the CDC guidelines were changed here a couple of weeks ago from fourteen-day quarantine of a close contact that went down to a ten-day. Or, it can be reduced even more to a seven-day if the person has a negative test after the fifth day. So, in a sense, right now, we have three different guidelines for close contacts. The policy that had changed last month dealt with close contacts in school only. That was a seven-day. And now the new CDC guideline, so if close contact is outside of school or in the household, then that is ten-day quarantine. And just reminder that if it's in the household or anywhere, I guess, it's always ten days after the last contact with a positive person. And then again, it can be moved down to seven days if they have a negative test from the fifth day on. And I do believe now the DOH has, has something out there that you can request a at-home test, and they will send it to you overnight to answer.
Item two, the staff attendance rule for the winter activities?
We just had a wrestling tournament, a wrestling squad, and one basketball game. And I believe it went fairly well. The wrestling tournament was a little more packed than I was thinking it would be, but the basketball game was about the right amount, and the wrestling squad was, was good. So, unless, the only things I cannot, we cannot control on that, like that a doubleheader or a basketball game, is how many students will come. is how many students will come from our school and how many students from the other school will be here. So those were the two big factors that could go into it that could change things a little bit.
Then item three, the staff work for long year grant phase, any changes there?
I don't have anything on that, other than that was kind of part of the survey, along with six C on the calendar, it was part of the survey.
Okay, item B, the third, and finally, the renaming the track after Gus Barnes and John Evans.
You'll get a motion on that.
I'll get a motion.
Motion by Brian, second by, second by Kelly, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, the same sign. Item C, the calendar.
Again, I think that was covered in the survey.
Thank you.
Unless anything you want to make any changes on.
I usually make a look at the calendar again and add days from that guy. It's a good two, three, or four, and yeah, there's no, on the grace side of Thanksgiving, but there's certainly a travel for Thanksgiving, from what I've heard or seen. We should get off our travels back in common Christmas. I wonder if I can, after it.
I would suggest that there are three days to move to them here. So then graduation, we put off for three days.
Graduation, does this, this group come back after graduation?
Then, when, when you're talking about changing the calendar and adding the three days at the end of Christmas break, and then you're stating that you have to add three days at the end of the school year, is that what you expected when you put that in the survey? Can you respond and clarify that?
I would just add to, um, just encompassing the full staff. If you just did three extra days and forgave those for teachers, that does um create some financial difficulty for the parents that don't get those three days of work. It also, I'm not having necessarily use the word hardship, but sort of, um, the twelve month staff, who have some secretaries that are twelve months, that still need some twelve months, that would still be expected to work those days while other people got those extra days off. And those are some of the people that have worked the hardest during the pandemic. So just a point to consider.
Where are we sitting at for our, our high school?
Right now, it's, we have to, we have to have Mr. Strickes look at the calendar to see what we're having.
On Stacy's point, could you use COVID money for those staff members?
So you're suggesting that you just pay those staff members an extra three days paid? It's an option?
If you're giving us the days off, I'm sure yes, pay that, it's not there, it's not worth it.
When this comes down to minutes at the end of the year, I'm just gonna be honest. When this comes down to times that we have to have at the end of the year, if we end up with ten or fifteen day snow days, we will be making up if we take all our extra days now. If we come February, if we have an outbreak, being they've changed the COVID thing, maybe it'd be better not to go to a red face, take a week off. And then, I mean, I'm just throwing some things out there. And just do the seven days that the CDC says to do. Would be an option. But the only thing I'm afraid of is when we don't have, I mean, I know we've got the mental health issue. But when we don't have the other issues right now, it's hard to know what's gonna happen with COVID a month from now. Or what's gonna happen with COVID come the first of March. If we use up everything we have right now, we have no buffer down the road. Because come to the end of the year, we'll still have to, at the end of the year, the number of minutes used in the school have to add up, whether it's our days or not. It's, right now, you're on a hundred and seventy-five day cal- um, calendar. And we've already got, take time away that wasn't student related when you didn't have students. So I mean, there's a lot of things when you're talking, come to the end of the year, I don't know what's gonna happen with snow days, I don't know what's gonna happen with COVID days. Can somebody help me with that? I mean, if we, at the end of Christmas, if we don't have an outbreak right away, would it be better to extend the spring break? Would it be better, we've gotten to this point, the last time we took fourteen days off, it was too much for the parents at home. When you take time off for the parents at home, then they've got a fine daycare because they're gonna be back at work. And then we're taking time away from the, from the students that need the, the school lunch program. Some of the only health issues that with our, our, our staff right here, that's gonna help the kids the most. And then we take you away from them even more.
What if they don't have the light? Even if they get dressed and stuff, they're not, they're not something to, to have them have minutes for. Everything is important, it's just trying to find the right combination right now.
Correct.
But I agree with Tom, I think that we are only halfway through the school year. And I understand that extra days off would be great, but they talk about the winter months being the worst part for COVID, and there's a lot of unknowns with snow, COVID, and other things that we don't know about, which even now, we all to end of May, that I don't know that we should count our chickens before they're hatched at this point, per se. And then we also have parents that have to change the temp time off from work to care for kids at home now that we changed the calendar. So that's some frustrations at home for the parents and families and guardians.
Can I speak and inform to this topic?
I'll represent.
Um, I'd like you to add eventually, and please consider, whether you consider the other day, I asked you to consider a teacher work day at the, um, on that Wednesday of Christmas break. I know I'm really going to executives to um session and speak more on the calendar. I'm asking you to please consider the Wednesday of Christmas break as a teacher work day. Um, as stated before from many staff members, um, talk about our um virtual learners. This would give teachers an opportunity to finish out the virtual learner, learners before the new semester starts. Give them an opportunity to um work on finalizing grades, um, writing papers, and getting all of that end of the year stuff done before they leave for Christmas break. If you don't consider anything else, please consider that as a teacher work day that Wednesday. Thank you.
And I would like to express my opinion on that. I wouldn't mind seeing that Wednesday, except Wednes, Mondays are the worst days for testing. And if you take the Wednesday off for the testing, then you're moving it back to Monday for the semester testing. You've got the high school students that are still getting the semester test Tuesday and Wednesday. If you take their Wednesday away, then their test's Monday. And anybody that's done anything with testing, Mondays are the worst day to come back for a semester test. So, we, we won't be discussing things, but if it would have been a Thursday, I would be a little more reluctant to go with something. But when it's moving the semester test to a Monday, is there any information out there that says Monday would be a better day for testing than Wednesday?
I do know that there is, I don't know in regards to Monday, but I do know that on that previous board meetings, we had seen some information on semester stuff after Christmas break. So to me, I don't consider a Monday after that day. I don't, and I'm not speaking in regards to some of our staff that work with holders too. I am student, I have children at my home, and I personally would disagree with the fact that Mondays are not testing.
Can I say to you that convinced practice high school teachers, which means neither they thought it would be an issue to have their tests on, I think, please say.
Seeing no other questions, uh, move on to new business.
Just as in that, as a teacher at the high school, we, because we see our students are the other day, anyway, our testing's scheduled, we have a schedule on Tuesday, that would have to be Friday as well. So their tests aren't even gonna be that day. I mean, the Monday students are good, they have the same opportunity to do the part, just because first of all, it's two days without being tested either way. That's enough. So if you may times it into a staff in service day, it would, it would actually just kind of allow the length of pursuing us on it.
I have questions, please ask me, because you already have students that are teaching at the school. So really, it would, I know, it would allow the students to be assessing that.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
I just want to reiterate prioritizing staff possibly in some of these decisions, because we love the students, we care about the students, we're so glad you guys do too. But kind of what we kept seeing in the survey is that this keeps getting all put on us, and we are exhausted and overwhelmed. Um, we are taking care of the students, but as our employers, we also need you guys to take care of us during these times.
Mr. Matic, I really don't wanna put you on the spot, because I'm willing to. Uh, just a play. As far as the high school admin goes, um, you know, you would be the one that would schedule me and tell us what works. In your mind, how does that play out with the testing?
Um, I wish that I would have talked to my staff about this, but I'm glad they're here to speak on our behalf. Honestly, the high school is on Thursday, we're in very disturbed. And I really appreciate that you guys are concerned about our semester test. They're only ten percent of their grade. Um, so it has a very little impact on student grades and um, students' grade stuff. I think my staff would have to change, I know what my team, incorrect on their behalf, we will correct me tomorrow morning. But we have that kind of relationship with each other. Um, I believe they would want that staff on the day on Wednesday, because otherwise they're gonna be grading over great. So they're gonna take their Christmas vacation, because grades will have to be given. To grade papers, to grade tests, to get all of that taken care of. And it would be working for free. Where if we didn't do the test on Monday, oh, it's not, I've never been tested. I did test on Monday, but I also gave my staff work for free over a holiday break. And they're getting that after they're out, not off, but on the birthday. Um, it helps them next, and that's because they can really take grades from birth. And um, do that a little bit. I think it would, I think it would be a good idea.
Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Seeing no other comments, move on to new business. Item A, classified reservation, need a motion for capening as a middle school parent.
I have a motion.
Motion by Kelly, second by, second by Carrie, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Acknowledged of public school exemptions. Need a motion to go to executive session. Motion by Brian, second by, second by Kelly, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, the same sign.
Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition I'm a rocket headed for the moon If I never slow down it's too soon My heart is racing but my mind's on track My spirit's gold but my path is jet black Bring it on, bring it on, show me what you got Turn it on, turn it on, my tail is red hot I see you on the other side I'm re-entered from the cosmic ride Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition I live the speed and I'll never die Moving fast and I'm aiming high It's the countdown for the human race Challengerating at a breakneck pace Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition Fire it up, fire it up I've got enough strength to let it out Fire it up, fire it up Set the ignition to the opposition Fire it up, fire it up I've got enough strength to let it out Fire it up, fire it up Set the ignition to the opposition Fire it up, fire it up I've got enough strength to let it out Fire it up, fire it up Set the ignition to the opposition Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition I live the speed and I'll never die Moving fast and I'm aiming high It's the countdown for the human race Challengerating at a breakneck pace Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition I live the speed and I'll never die Moving fast and I'm aiming high It's the countdown for the human race Challengerating at a breakneck pace Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition I live the speed and I'll never die Moving fast and I'm aiming high It's the countdown for the human race Challengerating at a breakneck pace Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition Fire it up, fire it up I've got enough strength to let it out Fire it up, fire it up Set the ignition to the opposition Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition Fire it up, fire it up I've got enough strength to let it out Fire it up, fire it up Set the ignition to the opposition Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition I live the speed and I'll never die Moving fast and I'm aiming high It's the countdown for the human race Challengerating at a breakneck pace Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition I live the speed and I'll never die Moving fast and I'm aiming high It's the countdown for the human race Challengerating at a breakneck pace Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition I live the speed and I'll never die Moving fast and I'm aiming high It's the countdown for the human race Challengerating at a breakneck pace Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition I live the speed and I'll never die Moving fast and I'm aiming high It's the countdown for the human race Challengerating at a breakneck pace Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition I live the speed and I'll never die Moving fast and I'm aiming high It's the countdown for the human race Challengerating at a breakneck pace Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition I live the speed and I'll never die Moving fast and I'm aiming high It's the countdown for the human race Challengerating at a breakneck pace Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition I live the speed and I'll never die Moving fast and I'm aiming high It's the countdown for the human race Challengerating at a breakneck pace Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition I live the speed and I'll never die Moving fast and I'm aiming high It's the countdown for the human race Challengerating at a breakneck pace Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition Fire it up, fire it up I've got enough strength to let it out Fire it up, fire it up Set the ignition to the opposition Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition Fire it up, fire it up I've got enough strength to let it out Fire it up, fire it up Set the ignition to the opposition Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition I live the speed and I'll never die Moving fast and I'm aiming high It's the countdown for the human race Challengerating at a breakneck pace Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition I live the speed and I'll never die Moving fast and I'm aiming high It's the countdown for the human race Challengerating at a breakneck pace Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition I live the speed and I'll never die Moving fast and I'm aiming high It's the countdown for the human race Challengerating at a breakneck pace Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition I live the speed and I'll never die Moving fast and I'm aiming high It's the countdown for the human race Challengerating at a breakneck pace Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition I live the speed and I'll never die Moving fast and I'm aiming high It's the countdown for the human race Challengerating at a breakneck pace Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition I live the speed and I'll never die Moving fast and I'm aiming high It's the countdown for the human race Challengerating at a breakneck pace Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition I live the speed and I'll never die Moving fast and I'm aiming high It's the countdown for the human race Challengerating at a breakneck pace Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition I live the speed and I'll never die Moving fast and I'm aiming high It's the countdown for the human race Challengerating at a breakneck pace Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition Fire it up, fire it up I've got enough strength to let it out Fire it up, fire it up Set the ignition to the opposition Fire it up, fire it up Get the pavement burning My head is spinning and the wheels are turning Fire it up, fire it up I've got a strange condition Set the ignition to the opposition Fire it up, fire it up Fire it up, up, up I've got enough strength to let it out Fire it up, fire it up Set the ignition to the opposition Fire it up, fire it up Fire it up Set the ignition to the opposition Fire it up Set the ignition to the opposition. Fire it up. Bring it on, bring it on, show me what you got. Turn it on, turn it on, my tail is red hot. I see you on the other side. I'm re-entered from the cosmic ride. Fire it up, fire it up. Get the pavement burning. My head is spinning and the wheels are turning. Fire it up, fire it up. I've got a strange condition. Set the ignition to the opposition. I live for speed and I'll never die. Moving fast and I'm aiming high. It's the countdown for the human race. Accelerating at a breakneck pace. Fire it up, fire it up. Get the pavement burning. My head is spinning and the wheels are turning. Fire it up, fire it up. I've got a strange condition. Set the ignition to the opposition. Fire it up, fire it up. Fire it up, up, up. I've got enough dread to let it out to you. Fire it up, fire it up. Fire it up. Set the ignition to the opposition. Fire it up.
I declare a sound three at eight fifty one. Item D, new hires classified staff. I'd like a motion for ALI Southwood for elementary parent. Motion by Kevin, second by Tammy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Be a motion for a work day.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. The, uh... Wednesday the twenty third would be a work day.
And in saying that, Monday would then be a regular day with three o'clock out for the teachers, or three o'clock out for the students with four o'clock for the teachers. Tuesday would be a one thirty out for the students and then four o'clock out for the teachers. And Wednesday would be a work day till one thirty time.
I'll second that.
In that second way, Carrie, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign.
I'd like to make a motion to offer a one-time stipend of seven hundred and fifty dollars for all full-time staff and a co-rated rate for hard-time staff and any others.
I have a motion, there is a second. Second by Kevin, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Seeing no other...
Uh, sounds like another motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That, uh, we're going to review the family first act on a monthly basis.
Okay, and then...
We'll continue after now.
And we're gonna continue that. In fact, the COVID relief act for one month. It's, uh, we must see what the federal government's gonna be doing. And we gotta keep with the response of the taxpayers as to when our COVID will end, depending on what it all costs. So I have a motion, second by... Second by Kelly, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Seeing tomorrow and Thursday. Good to hear, she made a motion to adjourn. Motion by... Motion by Terry, second by Jamie, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Have a great night.
More members want a picture?